We walked it.
No, there's plenty of people on the estate.
Quite a lot of walks through where there's holes in the two sides. It's going to get worse because Bertry Garden Village Tropics is going to come. The West Park's expanding. We've got Bertry Garden Village, so there's going to be a lot of traffic. And if they do 1500 houses, unless they get some better infrastructure, it's going to be serious. No, I've done enough. These guys are better than me. It's unbelievable. There's a meeting, it's supposed to be a meeting with Northern Rimwater, off work regulator. And they need to talk about capacity and stress over. We thought these applications would be paused about that meeting. Because the air was a few put in on the application, it comes to park one, but they don't think it's capacity. So we're not worried about the sewage, you know, it should be, it should be. It's worrying that we're quite environmental minded for the wildlife and it's from Consculip Park. All the way through Bertry, all the way through Skirting Hill, all the way through Burden Hill. It's just wiping out too much wildlife. Yes, yeah, yeah, you know, and they're going to put a ring road all the way through. So there's several roads, I mean, we've covered starts and Consculip. It's going to link up all the way around. So these houses are built for roads. Careful what you say, I'm worried. It's all right, as long as we don't talk about the ones who may not pick up our voices. I grew up at Halle Avenue, top of Beaumont Hill. Yeah, yeah, so I know very well. Grew, you know, walked around there and to say it, you go down the town like a concrete. It's a shame, you know, we need houses, we'll always need houses, but we need as many as the proposed. Apparently they had a local plan, they didn't have as many houses in. And they did a budget plan for the next 10 years and they realised they were running out of money. So they scrapped that one, brought this like big one in. That's what we were doing. Yeah, we're going to have to just drive further and further around the town. At the moment, you guys can just walk out, get back out and then you're in, couldn't be said. If you're going to build them, you've got to get the sewage, you've got to get the roundabouts and the roads. Make sure that this, make sure you please, otherwise it's just going to be an nightmare for us guys. And it's not for the Darlington population, it builds houses to get people to live there. Which is great, but what about the guys who are living here and struggling with our tennis? Schools, skilled persons. He's got three slots. He's got three slots, what he's going to have to do in five months is manage to get three seats. Are you on that? Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, if you Google it, it's probably golden, probably waiting. As long as you don't disrupt them. Just chasing people and then coming back to me. They do it on purpose to make a big one. You want your Christmas things? All sorts, loads of different, different foods. She's got some makeup, expensive makeup, she likes the expensive makeup. Hamburg, you can't go wrong with that. A few bits of bobs, what about yourself? You lost some of your chocolate. No, I can ask you, what do you want, what do you want? Terrible, that's terrible. Maybe she came over and was wearing a white pink dress again. Not that sort of thing. That's just one huge box. She went, come on, then she lets it today. What she got for me. Promised nothing. Away from Big Cruise in January, February. Promised nothing. This, I know about. I know, it's hard to buy for anyone. I'd rather, you know, I would like to get pins, I'd rather buy something, I know what you want. You're on Facebook? Yeah. Genius, isn't he? If you just search Darlington planning applications. Thank you, so much love. In fact, you have the wifi, I'm honoured for the comments, but it's not going to let you in. Would you want to swap seats? Just so I can keep an eye on them. Yes, good idea. Get your own, Sue. Oh, thank you. I was hoping to jump on the free wifi, but it's just sticking, thinking about it. I should be able to just click on there. Please, are you done, okay?
No, no, that's fine, I'm on my feet.
I'm all right, thank you very much, it's okay.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, colleagues, welcome to today's planning application meeting. We have a very heavy agenda, so, okay. I'll do, we'll get through just the right business time before we start. Some comments I'll make before actually the application. Thank you. I'll start with the introductions and we'll run our straight out of the table. I'm councillor, I'm Chair of the House.
Hello, everyone, I'm Councillor.
I'm Plougherton, Dancruck Services.
Hello, I'm councillor, I'm Tosh Robinson, Herbert Ward.
Good afternoon, everyone, I'm councillor, Tosh Robinson, now representing the House.
Councillor McCollum, Park East.
Councillor Lee Hayne from Connaughtest.
Councillor Richard Law in Harrogate Hill Ward.
Councillor Stacey King, Northgate Ward.
Councillor Jeremy March, Rootfield Ward.
Andrew Everton, Legal Services. Thank you very much. Can I remind members and speakers that when you come to the table, can you please speak into the mic and not at it? We have got people upstairs and we probably would still hear unless the microphone's a huge problem. Have we any declarations of interest? No. Introductions to the procedure. Before I ask the legal, they will come in and go through that, there's a couple of points I'll make. We received several emails and conversations from members and some general public about this meeting being held today on the 20th of December, so close to Christmas. Myself and the officers made no apology for that, it is a normal working day. A part of the council processes need to take place. So there's no apology for a result of the meeting this close to Christmas. Secondly, we've had some issues about the notification of the meeting. This meeting is no different to any other council meeting. I was given the June notice, whether it's a normal meeting or a special meeting. Notification was sent out eight days, seven or eight days before the meeting with the purple paperwork, which is standard procedure for a council meeting or a committee meeting of this council set. And those meetings and schedules and procedure policy were set by council and cabinet. So, I'm sorry about if you felt aggrieved that it had been shown notice or the meeting being on the 20th of December. But that's the way the business works within Darlington Borough Council, and that's what the procedure is. You'll have to wait until finished council, sorry, I won't bring you in. But there will be this mood debate around how the procedure of this meeting or council works. We, we, I've also been approached to change or alter the protocol for this meeting to allow more people to speak. Due to the legal ramifications that could occur from allowing that, we will be sticking to the protocol set down in this meeting. The legal, Mr Andrews will explain here. We are concerned that if we do change procedure, previous meetings, previous planning meetings might be held to challenge or future ones might be held to challenge. If members of Darlington Borough Council wish to change the protocol, there are procedures through the policy and constitution that that can be done. It needs approaching the legal people and the political groups and taking it through cabinet and council. It's been a difficult sort of decision. We want to be open and transparent with everybody involved in this. But there is a protocol laid down for this meeting. And if I agree to change, it isn't in my discretion to do so. But if we agree to that, we could be opening up ourselves for future challenges on planning. And previous, you know, someone might come back and say, well, you didn't give me a chance to speak in a meeting, but you did it at that meeting. I'm not saying that will happen, but you know, the world that we live in now, anything that can be challenged or people feel unfairly about, they will challenge. So if we stick to the protocol laid down, then we will get on through this meeting as quickly as we can. You wanted a quick comment before sending our councillor away?
Thank you. I just want to make two points really, if I may. One is about notification. Local parish council wasn't notified formally, which meant that they had been unable to put a representative here. Now, I'm sorry that I'm worried, and I'm worried.
Into the mic, please, councillor.
I'm worried that tells me there's no such statutory requirement to notify the parish council. And that does concern and surprise me because in this sense, the parish council have been involved with this planning application for years. To the extent that they actually employed a planning consultant, appointed a subcommittee, the subcommittee set up, they discussed with our planning offices their neighbourhood plan, which was then subsequently approved and accepted by the local authorities. Which is part of our statutory planning obligation, legal obligation. But then they find that having done it ourselves, they spent the time, spent the money on the consultant, and then looking forward to a meeting, then they weren't notified. There's something wrong with the system when we go that far. That's the first thing. The second thing is, the neighbourhood plan, I was surprised and extremely disappointed to see that having spent the money, having spent the time with the consultant and with our planning authority, then created a neighbourhood plan which was then approved and accepted by the local authority. To find that since subsequent legislation came in on planning, which then kicked the neighbourhood plan into touch. So the years and the cost which the local parish councillors spent have just been wasted, absolute waste. Now, the question then, which is still in my mind, is if the legislation then did throw this neighbourhood plan into, into, into touch, was there any discussion with planning offices, with the parish council, to explain to them that some of the things were shared?
You're going off the point here councillor, can you get direct to where you're going?
Well, I'm not, sorry, there is reference within the planning application that the neighbourhood plan, the local parish council has created, I would spend so much money, it's not relative, or hip relative.
But did you take into account why the neighbourhood plan was taken? Wasn't that national policy by the current government? I won't make big political points in planning, but you can't put your finger at local authority when it's a national policy.
If you listen, yes, they spend hours and many hours with the planning department approving it. But if you just bear with me and just listen to what I'm concerned about, is has our planning authority discussed the variation between their local plan and the new legislation to allow the parish council to modify the neighbourhood plan so at least it is relevant?
My understanding is most statutory duty on this application to modify your parish council. It's very much the same council with most planning applications. As a local councillor, I have angry, angry references that haven't been notified of an application. I have contacted the planning department and asked why. And we're giving an explanation of the limitations within, that people have to be informed. It's annoying, it's angry, but as our role as councillors, we then have a duty to inform as many people who we feel will be affected by a planning application. And that's the way it goes. I'm not getting in the council, sorry. I've got another councillor, I want you to speak councillor. Can you, no, continue, mate. On the points I've already raised, nothing else but the points I've already raised, councillor.
Thank you, Chair. I'm almost at a loss for lots of words about to start with this and the issues I have with this. We've been presented with a document here that is 190 pages. I'm not debating the fact that the procedure hasn't been followed. I'm debating the size of this, the three applications. We've got 190 pages here. I'll contest the fact that we've been given eight days to develop because for two days the system went down for apparent book fixing or something. So we've missed two days, so there are actually only six days in order to read these papers. Now, the average reading speed puts the, just the agenda, and I'm not talking about supplementary items, which I think ought to be considered by any diligent health community, is six and a half hours of reading, that's just the agenda. Now, I, as you know, and officers of this council know, I work full time. So let's take out five days. Now I've got one day, I've got six and a half hours plus supplementary reading to undertake. Now, I'm glad that you've talked about the law, because I studied the law. And there is such a thing called reasonableness. Is it reasonable that members of this planning committee can read all of this documentation, be properly informed to represent the people of Darlington in six and a half hours reading that report? Given that, let's assume that the report is accurate and good, which I would contest itself. That is not reasonable. On a personal level, and the game officers know this, I have an affliction, I've got epilepsy. Now, as part of that, I have to sleep. If I don't sleep, I'll die. So it's quite important I get my sleep. Unlike other members, I can't work through the night and read these papers, otherwise I would. So obviously when we're talking about, I'm going to talk about the law, we're talking about the Equality Act, because you're discriminating against me. It's impossible for me to get through these papers, it's impossible for me to represent the performance. And one of these applications will have a massive effect upon me. So let's talk about the Equality Act 2010, you're discriminating against me. So I bring case against the PCI on that act. And finally, I'd like to talk about due diligence. Members of this committee have due diligence to the people of this town. I can't find it possible that that due diligence is being met. And again, this is part, this is a part of law, due diligence. Is it, are we really showing due diligence to get through this amount of paperwork and supplementary items and be able to come to proper conclusions? And I would contest that. And on that and all those points, I am moving that this, this meeting is entirely.
Sorry councillor, I know you've already informed me. I will bring you in at the point that I want you to do that. Okay.
Okay.
I got, we haven't got to that yet. I've made my point. On the points you, sorry, on the points you have made, you can say that about full council. The paperwork you get for full council, you get the same notification. And I've seen as I have 300 pages of full council. It's the same with any committee, the paperwork that comes with the meeting, comes with the meeting. The other thing is, as an elected member, you know, it's a bit of a shock to newly elected members, and no disrespect to any newly elected member, the amount of paperwork that you get, it's far less than it used to be, I'll promise you that. But there is always going to be paperwork with meetings, and you want paperwork to be as formidable as possible. There isn't a way within this, this is a legally standing committee, it's je quid judicial. Which means that we need to act on, there's the relevant information supplied, and there's much more relevant information that can be supplied. So aside from the paperwork, there's no way in the world you can reduce that. I accept we could maybe have three items that are very large. There's a reason that two of them have been on the agenda or been in a state since 2000, at least 2017. And the third one since was being discussed back in 2018 and has been coming forth in 2019. I accept what you're saying, it is difficult and sometimes frustrating, the level of paperwork that's provided. And I think the chances, you are not the only councillor that works and has other activities to carry on.
Agreed, this is talking appropriate.
No, can I finish? I didn't interrupt you councillor, please don't interrupt me. I accept what you're saying, and it's a reality of life and a reliable reality of being a councillor, that at times you will be under pressure to do stuff. It's the way that could be grumbled, I'm afraid. Yeah? A quick response is all I want.
Quick responses, if we have applications from 2017, 2018, might this be an emergency meeting? Answer me that, what's the emergency?
It's not an emergency meeting.
It's declared as an emergency planning meeting. That is the name of it. What is the emergency?
It depends on the side of the fence you sit on councillor, as a progress I would imagine.
Emergencies?
The contractors that want, you know, the paint chasing this for four or five years are looking for movement on it. Over Christmas. We're going to move on. We're now, sorry, we're now asked the legal colleague to go through the procedure for us.
Thank you, Chair. Just to let you know, the people who attended the planning committees before the order that matters a dog. For each item firstly, we begin with the planning officer presenting their report. And the applicants are originally in address members. Then up to a maximum of three objectives, three supporters, with a register to speak, may then address members. Then a member of the parish council may wish to speak. All speakers can talk for a maximum of five minutes each and will be expected to say questions from others. Any ward councillors express a wish to address committee, they then do so. The appellate officer will then summarise the key planning issues. Members can ask questions of officers. And the Chair will then invite earlier speakers back to the table in turn if there's anything further they wish to say. The planning officers can then make any final comments. Members then debate the matter, a couple of lots of motion, not motion, a bunch of voting, voting will take place. And the Chair will then conclude the session. The members of the public who made the familiar proceedings of the planning committee may be assured as to what matters. The members can take this into consideration and make their decisions to do. I'll just briefly look through some guidance which is applicable to all applications. I'll just briefly look through some guidance which is applicable to all applications. This is set out in more detail in each report, but it's given a very broad overview. Starting from the ready decision, section 38.6 of the Planning and Compassive Purchase Act 2014. And this provides that all decisions must be made in accordance with the local plan unless particular considerations indicate otherwise. And material considerations aren't defined specifically in the act, but there are matters which are relevant to making the decision. The court generally take the view that plans concerning land use and public interest rather than loss of private rights. And we set out examples on screen of some matters that the court found to be material considerations and some which are not to be. Another material consideration is the National Planning Policy Framework which is issued by the government to represent the today equivalent planning policy. And decision makers must take this into account when making planning decisions. So once the material considerations have been identified, it's then for the decision maker to decide how much will it be to reach. And this will depend on the circumstances of the case and guidance given within each officer's report. So just to recap, all decisions must be made in accordance with the local plan unless material considerations indicate otherwise and members assess that it will be necessary.
Thank you. I must say, apologies from councillor Anderson, councillor Coates, sorry. Councillor Robinson, you now close my vote?
Yes, as I alluded to before, I'd like to make, to move a motion that this meeting in its entirety is deferred until the year...
Is there a second after that motion?
Like second motion?
Councillors have a view, discuss this? You might be in the care councillor later. Okay, just so members don't even identify, not me.
That's fine, that's fine, thank you. Well, many of the reasons said, I think I would agree with the previous speakers, you know, I wrote an email or a brief email saying we haven't had enough time and I've been on this council planning committee for a long, long time and never had so much to read in so little time. But it is important that people like the parish council is informed so they can actually do what they're there to do, to represent the people. And it's also fair to go through all this consultation with them, for them to prepare for the meeting and then not notify them when the meeting is on. So I think for everybody's peace of mind, for the council officers, the council members who need, I honestly think need time to absorb and read these 190 pages to understand some of these things which are quite complex, quite complex issues and straightforward planning by a long way. So for that reason, I would more than be more than ideal to move to second and support to councillors, thank you.
Any further motion? Why, we're going on this then, those in favour of deferring this meeting to next year, please show. One, two, three, four. Those against? One, two, three, four. And casting board? Five, that motion is lost.
Thank you very much.
We move on then? We move on to the agenda then, the application for planning permissions. I would like to take item C first from the Blackwell Grange item first. Do members, okay, taking that item first? Okay then, we'll move on to that on page 141 in the documentation. And I will hand over to, I will hand over to Mr. Court to give us, I'll say the word, brief outline of the application.
Thank you very much Chair. This application relates to the former Blackwell Grange golf club, which I'm sure members will be fairly familiar with. It's for residential development consisting of four houses and associated assets. There's also a link to the adjacent parkland, which I'll move on to in a minute. But there are two elements of this scheme, one for the four to four houses and one for the improvement of the parkland. A very close link because one can't happen without the other. So I'll just ask members to keep that in mind when we go through the consideration process. There has been a little bit of concern, I think, raised by some objectives. The agenda plan that you see attached to your reports includes the whole site. And it does indeed, it covers the housing site, it also covers the adjacent parkland we're talking about. Apologies if that's been confusing in the shape or form, but it's still in that way to identify the whole site because the whole site is actually part of this application. I think some people took the view that you were referring back to 2019 where the whole site is considered the largest site with the surplus of the lot. It's what we confirm here now that we go through the report, that's not the case. And we are talking about site four or three will become application and the rest is parkland. So hopefully that will become evident in the table as presumably. The site has actually been closed as a golf course for some time now. It's in a parkland setting and of course the hotel, which is still certainly beyond the ground for that people to hotel. And there was a proposal to extend development into all of this area. You see from consultation lists, there are 181 people have been consulted, 109 were objected and there are 11 letters of support. In more general terms, you'll see, that is a generic line by the way, the residential area to the rest of the parkland. Generally speaking, there is an access point from the A67 from Calmer Road which is about here. There's a tier slide that I'll show you a bit later on in this place there. Cal Parkland is provided within all of the plots. The four to four ones are seven different house types. There are sub-ponds, several pedestrian links, pumping station and associated landscape. Interestingly, in terms of sustainability, there is an use of air force heat pumps in all of the properties as there are above and beyond building regulation installation for 125, 25 eco-beats installation. All of the sites, all of the properties also include PV panels, which is incredibly encouraging. It goes above and beyond what you normally expect to see when you get anywhere with development. So that's another key point I would ask you to think about. That's the layout in itself. The sub-ponds are top, at the bottom, and that is the point of access. You'll see there is a way leaf that goes through the site, which is ultimately, it's certainly a way leaf for the main site. But that's going to be utilised as an informal walking area to be able to tramp across the site. That's the basics Chair.
Can you speak into the mic please, I can't hear you upstairs.
Okay. Is that, is that your better? Is that the better? Right.
Thank you.
Is that the better?
Yeah.
The other key issue is the application should be successful is tied into a 106 legal agreement. A legal agreement specifies a number of financial contributions, partly upgrading the park, partly affordable housing, sustainable transport infrastructure. So at the moment, it's a technicality that when you see the section 111 of the Local Movement Act, that relates to a promise of a legal obligation, shall I say, for the developer should the scheme be successful to sign up to the 106 agreement. The reason that's there is because currently the council own the land and can't sign a legal agreement with itself. So that's just an interim measure, should members be minded about planning issue today, is a hook to make sure that 106 is signed when that land transfer takes place to another party. That's what, that's all about. Statement of community involvement, there has been significant engagement with members of the public and there has been significant responses. We've tried where possible to take those into account and that is reflected in your report. The key starting point, I think, for all our considerations and it's something we speak about every meeting, is the importance of the development plan, going to the local plan. More particularly, section 38 of the planning act, which directs us towards the local plan. It must always be the stepping off point. Failure to do that could lead to some quite significant problems. The second leg of section 38 allows us some discretion, as I always mention, that there are other material considerations to take into account but they have to be pretty weighty to move away from what the development plan, which is a document, government approved document. In terms of items, consultation items, you'll see in the top of page 145 Chair, there have been acceptance objects in principle from the highest engineer, transport planning officer, environmental officer, historic cooling regulations officer, the agriculture officer and the lead authority. Again, it's a point I'll touch on, Northumbria Ward is raised no objections. I know it's a, it's a point which has been the centre of many objections and I'm sure we have speakers here today who will speak to that particular issue. But I will come back to that in a short while. So the 120 letters of objection, 109 letters of categorised objections, we have a support. Just very briefly, rather than go through them all Chair, if I may, I'll just summarise very briefly. The points raised in support are parting the generations welcome, support for planting new trees. Concerns raised are being contrary to the local plan, additional housing is not required, flood risk concerns, impact on heritage assets, blossom impacted trees, insufficient provision for affordable housing, loans and disturbance during construction. There are, there are many more, but I've just reviewed those, the order, they are on page 46. For members raised around housing mix, there is a particular set of circumstances here which is supported by our policy in the local plan which whereas possible, affordable housing mix, people affordable housing is provided on site. That's always a more sensible thing to do to enable a balanced community to be generated amongst private housing and other types of housing. In this particular case, the local plan policy does permit us in certain circumstances to take a financial contribution instead of providing local site. And that's what's occurred in this particular case. The reason being, a type of form of housing, it would be exceptionally difficult to make sure a social landlord would be interested to take on that type of property. So as an alternative, we have taken a financial contribution which we can hold to, which can be used to provide social housing within the borough. It's just an alternative way of providing. So in those circumstances, policy 85 of the local plan, we think is very relevant. In terms of the detail, you'll see that the general layout Chair, has the access here, a structure development through this walkway, sub-ponds, there is a small pumping station at the top end, all of which are being necessarily facilitated. One of the issues raised by objectors is the loss of a church house or an agricultural building, whatever you want to call it. I think it was last used as a green keepers store. Now, our consideration advice is really clear in that whilst it is a building of some merit, it's not something which justifies retention, more particularly the public benefit weight of argument whereas in favour of development taking place, because obviously you need that building in order to facilitate access. So there is a public benefit argument who often need to pay, so that why that building is justified is remarkable. There is further information in the report which suggests that if members would like to grant, there are important elements that can be retained and incorporated within the fabric of the new development. The entrance areas, the west door version, are important and it's a good building to be seen. So our consideration advice quite clearly indicates that that would be the appropriate way forward and that the public benefit argument actually stands as acceptable for to move. Generally speaking, the layout and look of the building, generally through the real pictures you can see, are pretty high quality. They are high quality materials, as I said earlier, they exceed the building regulation requirements for installation. They include solar panels, heat pumps and all the rest of it. In official terms, the buildings have received an awful lot of attention from colleagues throughout the council and significant improvements have in fact been made. And they are almost, it's not arts and crafts, but takes significant preference from the arts and craft movement with the type of materials involved particularly in the uniforms and the shows. So you'll see the four bedroom house with 90 years of wood to work, and the Morris, when you believe it. And there's the fountain and the green earth, the Dardley, the most important. So that's the general view. Just to tie one or two things up Chair, one of the key issues that are being raised from objectors is the loss of trees within the development, which of course is a significant consideration. And it's something during the design process has been taken, to my view, into account. You'll see on page 157 Chair, there are overall 1,375 trees on the site. There are 115 would be removed to facilitate the development, primarily on the housing side. There are very few to be removed from the existing parkland. There are three trees which would be classified as category A, which are significant trees. The rest of the trees to be removed are the less important. I think the important element to consider here is, it is accepted, I'm making it very clear, that to facilitate development, some trees might be removed, very limited... some trees might be removed, a very limited number, if you very significantly. What is going back in, is with the agreed landscape scheme, which we spent a lot of time on, is the replanting of trees, which by far exceed those that are coming out. So there'd be hundred and fifteen removed, and there'd be actually hundred and forty now being replanted. So there is a very clear thought that's being gone to the maintenance of the park and to preserve the park for what it is indeed improving. Very briefly, Chair, if I may, I'm new here. Just the very briefly picking up the other points which have been raised as a result of objections. Condition nine, within the recommendation talks about the construction management plan. So there's a degree of control of how this actually operates and the process. The environment health officer is satisfied that the mediation, that this potential mediation could be required. That's covered by condition number eighteen twenty. I won't specifically cover access and accessibility because our highway expertise here shouldn't be dealing with particular questions. It'll also cover visiting express and traffic generation impact. Moving quickly on to the key elements of the one oh six, Chair. There is, as I said, a section one 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 document, which will then be transferred into the one oh six once the land ownership is changed. There is nine hundred and eighteen thousand pounds to be paid as an affordable housing contribution. And whilst they're not being provided on site, there is a significant amount of money to go to the park to enable, to facilitate that being provided elsewhere. There is a forty-four thousand pounds sustainable transport contribution. There's a hundred and twenty thousand pounds towards the Lammers' Corner roundabout. A last point I'd make before moving to conclusion is NHS, NHS North East and Northumbria Integrated Chairboard has asked for a financial contribution towards doctors' practice. Some authorities do ask for that type of money. However, there is a very clear identified process to dig into, the NHS process. And my opinion is that it's an unnecessary burden on the developer. And if there is an increased requirement for healthcare, that should come through quite properly, different routes. And there is a process for doctors to apply for funding, whether it's additional space or an extension to existing practice. And that is the correct route which you should follow. Continuing, Chair. In summary, the principle of development is acceptable. It's an identified site within the local plan, which has gone through government scrutiny. It's a first stepping off point for our decision-making process. It's identified with the housing planning. So there's a presumption in favour of development. It is acceptable in terms of impact on heritage assets. The proposal will result in a significant enhancement to the area in terms of the parkland, which is a very close link here. One doesn't happen without the other. I'd ask members to bear that in mind. And there are any, well, there are some retrieved losses. But the mitigation package to replace them are far exceeded enough. In terms of highway safety, ecology, flood maintenance, sorry, flood risk and drainage, all of these actually consciences have come back to us with a particular view. So the recommendation, Chair, would be subject, members we invited to grant, subject to section one 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 agreement, which would tie the developers into signing a one oh six, which would secure all that money within the one oh six, to a one oh six agreement, one oh six agreement. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Coates. I'd like to make a case in the applicant of the hearing, Mr Smith. So I'll ask Mr and Mrs Green, if they'd like to take the canvas box, Chair. Will you put the microphone in front of the microphone? If you can speak, bring the microphone, of course, and speak into the microphone. You have five minutes.
Is that clear enough?
That's lovely.
Thank you, Chair. Angela Michael Green, we're members of the Campaign Network that's affiliated to the Oral Spaces Society. And at the hearings, we spoke on behalf of community members, community groups. I want to thank Mr Coates for his introduction and that reassurance. I would still like to clarify for members the reasons for the concerns. And I refer here to that plan on page one eight nine. We've spoken about the local plan. In the adopted local plan, Chair, at the cabinet meetings, there's always been two distinct areas. The main half land, which is for restoration, with a boundary, forty-four acres and a boundary, and an area for proposed housing that Mr Coates has spoken about, again marked with a boundary and called Site four oh three, the locals notice the plan is born a triangle. Cabinet approval was obtained for the disposal of Site four oh three, thirteen acres, with the council's joint venture partner, ESH, to develop and develop the housing, as we heard. And that was minuted in the cabinet meeting in February twenty twenty-three. The parkland restoration plan to be funded from the sale of four oh three. The parkland itself is one of the borough's ten urban rural parklands. And that was designated as a parkland in the local plan. Nowhere did it say that an applicant or the applicant would acquire the historic parkland and Site four oh three as one site. But that's shown on page one eight nine as one site in this report's plan. The map on page one eight nine is fifty-seven acres is not the local plan's policies map, map nine, that we used to, or the plans that were used at any of the cabinet meetings. It actually combines the proposed housing area of four oh three and the historic parkland into one new area. And this is important simply because on pages one four three, page one four three, paragraphs three, four and five, the parkland and Site four oh three are both described as being part of a planning application, referring to the whole area as the site. Paragraph five says the applicant would enter into an agreement once they acquire the site. So let's say Site four oh three, it says the site. And the only site in this map, in this pack, is the one on page one, one eight nine. There is only one. The site is shown on one eight nine, includes the historic parkland, has to be acquired by the applicant. So what I'm saying, Chair, is that for the purpose of that report and this meeting, the wording needs to be changed for evidence of all doubt, to avoid, sorry, avoidance of all doubt. And in this report, before the vote is taken by elected members, and one way of doing this will be to simply add the number four oh three to the word site and refer to the official policies map number nine in the adopted local plan and the plans that were used at cabinet. Or better way, Chair, would be an addendum based on an email that we received from David Coates. And again, this will be avoidance of all doubt. And our belief is, Chair, that without this, members may be voting for any historic parkland that was saved under the previous administration in twenty twenty-two to be in doubt within the application of twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, can I turn it to here so you can hear me? Okay. Right, I'm speaking on impact of trees. Paragraph eight on page one four five and paragraph sixty-four to sixty-six make no mention of DBC's ecology officer report, which lists at least a hundred and one trees proposed for removal from four oh three site. The DBC officer asks for a reconfiguration of the layout of the site to avoid at least the thirty-nine category A and B trees being destroyed. Flood and DBC engineer in his report highlights the need to have regard for any nearby housing from increased flood. The rear gardens of houses on Range Side that are adjacent to four oh three, just bring it back down, please, are in a high-risk area and they do flood. The Environment Agency, as you hear, are also warning about stress home and the accumulation of problems caused by additional developments, of which this is one. Affordable homes. Now, you've heard, these are not a feature in this proposed development. And the applicant actually says that there would be a negative impact on sales prices, that the location does not have a huge need for affordable housing and it could be built in other areas of needs. May be true. But many first-time buyers would welcome the affordable home scheme, reducing it by thirty percent, et cetera. So there is a need there.
Thank you, Chair. That summarises our concerns. We also would like to speak later on with support as well.
That's fine, Mr Green. Can you still have it, because you now open to members asking new questions. Are there any questions from others? No? Certainly very much, Mr Smith. In fact, you can still, yeah. No, I'll bring Mr Mallison in first and then you come back. I know that makes it sound strange to members, but they're speaking against it there. And we'll be speaking on four in a minute. Hi, Mr Mallison. You have five minutes, so if you can speak into the mic globally.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Yes, I've got five minutes. So I'm actually speaking on the other two applications as well. So I'm dedicating this particular one to the sewage infrastructure, which covers this, the next, and the next after that. So it's a global issue that covers all sites. I raised a couple of questions at the council meeting on the thirtieth of November under the Bushland Sewage, which got removed. I did receive a holding answer which suggested that a meeting was to be arranged with NWL, the Environment Agency, Ofwat, and Darlington Borough Council, members and officials, to investigate the letter in March and June this year. The letter categorically states that the sewage networks is full along with Stretton Sewer Treatment Works and any extra dry weather flow. So that is just human sewage coming from your body. Sorry, the graphics. Would cause more sewage spills in wet weather. So it's getting a little bit complex now. This is due to the combined sewer element of the network. And that is because of the age that Darlington actually is. So we've got around about twenty-five percent of Darlington is based on combined sewers. That is surface water and fowl going into the same pipe. In twenty twenty-two, Darlington saw five hundred and thirty-one discharges for two thousand one hundred and seventy-nine hours going out of the combined sewer network and into the river, broadly into the River Te, into the River Skirr. So in context of those five hundred and thirty-one discharges, on average, in Darlington, it rains a hundred and twenty-five days a year. So it's way exceeding that sort of number. So it doesn't have to rain before it's spilling over. And that's across twenty-four combined sewer overflows in the town. But mainly the South Park structure, of which, members, I've actually given you a copy of, a picture that I took on Saturday, that actually shows the state of that particular combined sewer overflow, which is one point eight metres, or if you're as old as me, six foot by four foot, one point eight by one point two. The town Sewer Treatment Works at Stretton was constructed in nineteen thirty-nine and has had significant development taken place within the town, certainly after the Second World War. And even with design factors of safety that are clearly built in, the system is now basically full. So putting that in context, back in nineteen thirty-nine, not that I can remember, but I'm sure somebody can, our population was fifty percent less than what we've got now. An example of taking up capacity is Milton St George. The old village is served by a combined sewer and discharges to its own treatment works, or discharged to its own treatment works, and has a combined sewer overflow on Milton Wall Front. Due to many failures of the licence of the sewage treatment works and of the CSO combined sewer overflow, Northumbria Water constructed a pumping station, which now discharges the entire two villages into Darlington's Stretton Sewer Treatment Works. Much more spare capacity has been used up due to the reduction of big industries in the town, manufacturing industry predominantly. So for example, Kent and Baldwin, Cleveland Bridge, and the Fords, just to name a few. The situation has not simply appeared. This situation has been coming along for a long, long time. There appears to be a difference of opinion on the status of the sewage infrastructure based on today's report. However, you must put the timeline in comments from Northumbria Water. Those comments were back in August twenty seventeen from Northumbria Water, saying that it wasn't an issue. And due to the raised interest and the extra focus on the EA, they are now exercising their power and exploiting on the discharge licence. And in March and June, and I'm talking about at least two separate letters that I'm aware of, they have made it quite clear, once these letters arrived within the council, was it not appropriate that Darlington Borough Council actually formally contacted Northumbria Water as a competent authority to let them know of the conflicting information from the regulatory board body? Just to remind people, Northumbria Water are not a statutory planning council too, and the EAR. I've been through Northumbria Water's latest asset management plan, recently submitted to Ofwat for the period twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty, and can see no provision has been made for a CSO combined sewer overflow improvement works or in fact upgrading of Stretton Treatment Works from a volume perspective. However, I have picked up these statements for the Darlington area, which is quite a substantial document, under the title of significant collaboration opportunity with Darlington Borough Council. North Blackwell Scone Park overflow, that's the one that you have a picture of, is to be addressed between twenty thirty and twenty thirty-five. Current estimate costs fifteen million pounds. Number two, Stretton Water Treatment Works has been identified as requiring a dry weather flow compliance upgrade between twenty thirty and twenty forty. An investigation for discharge quality compliance has been identified for phosphorus between twenty twenty-five and twenty thirty. So it's only that latter bit that they are hoping to get the appropriate money to upgrade, nothing to do with volumes. With the latest EO findings and information, it does raise the question as to whether NWL, if they've anticipated the large growth programme based on the local plan, the adopted local plan, and if in fact they were aware of the extra ten thousand houses, as it will have a significant impact on the sewage network and infrastructure, never mind the treatment works to build approximately fifty thousand population, sorry, that was built for fifty thousand population back in nineteen thirty-nine. There is no simple answer to the problem. However, Darlington Borough Council can assist this by taking out the highway drainage that's connecting to the combined sewers, so they can take away the load and make more load. load available down at the sewage treatment works and stop the spills coming over into the CSO.
You have thirty seconds, Mr Mallison.
I've got five lines, is that okay?
Yes, go ahead.
To make more capacity at the network. Finally, Blackwell, which is obviously what we're talking about, four oh three site suggests that the surface water from the houses and the roads will ultimately be discharged into an existing highway drain, which is very unusual, very unusual. It will have designed only for the road, sorry, the existing highway drain, which is on Grange Road, is only designed for the road network. It will also mean that the surface water sewer on site will not be adopted by North London Water, leaving Darlington to adopt the surface water system and the retention tanks along with the highway drain capacity issue, which will clearly come to the fore. Residents will not have to pay for the surface water to be dealt with by North London Water, but I'm assuming will be part of the council tax.
Sorry, Mr Green, John. My Mr and Mrs Green, take the chair again, as supporters. Oh, sorry, I do apologize. Mr Chair, of course, is an object. Take the chairs. No. I want Christopher Taylor. Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Sorry, my name is Mr Chair. My name is Christopher Taylor. I just live locally. Mine seems a very small point compared to everyone else. I'm not opposed to the housing development itself. I'm just concerned at what's happening to the rest of the parkland. It's been sprayed recently with wildflowers and et cetera. It seemed to spill this right across to the main entrances into the park and made an absolute mess of it. I'm wondering whether the rest of the parkland is going to be allowed to grow or whether it's going to be cut in future. As it's been mentioned before, it's been seen to have been contained as one site and one development. I'm just wondering whether the council are still going to cut the rest of the main parkland to allow us locals, walking dogs, et cetera, using it as a nice convenient place with beautiful trees, et cetera, in the future. That's my main concern.
That might be a question that councillor Scott might be able to help and support you with, or the local councillors.
There seems to be also...
The officers, the officers will respond to that, shall they?
Right. There seems to be all sorts of rumours that wildflowers are just going to be allowed to develop, spread through the rest of the parkland, and there's only going to be pathways to it. Whereas at the moment, it's a beautiful area for people to exercise their dogs, et cetera. And I just wonder why they've sprayed the areas right across to the main entrances into the park, which is going to mean that the wildflowers are going to completely be obstructed getting into the park at all. The bottom of the Blackwell Hotel driveway, come right across there, and the main entrance in from the wood at the top there near the Blackwell Crossroads, that is a complete mess.
I think, exactly as you said, I think at the moment, this current time is an issue that we should be taking up the streets in, because they're maintained at the moment. I'm sure officers can give an answer on future expectations.
I have written in, my piece written in my head as well, so it should be in hand. Anyway, I saw that one, thank you very much.
Mr Coles will respond when we bring him back in. Mr Coles will respond to the issues you raised.
Okay.
The application.
Thank you very much.
We now move back. Sorry, Mr Green. Is that okay, Chair?
Yeah.
It was interesting application, simply because you could either object or you could support. The difficulty was that if you objected, then you objected to everything. You objected to housing and also you would object to the parkland restoration. If you support, then you support everything on the housing and also the parkland restoration. So that's why we're speaking twice, because you find on the portal that we are listed as micro green objects, micro green supports, Angela Rafe Green supports, Angela Rafe Green, and so on. So I'm going to try and explain that, Chair, and what we do support. So there is much to support, Chair, of the benefits of access to this natural parkland. You've got to think back that we didn't have forty four acres of public space available prior to the council moving. As for support, we've just heard the gentleman here, there is, it's a continuum from people who say, no, we don't want it to be restored in any particular way, leave it as it is, maintain it, look after the trees, leave it to wild. And that's at one extreme of the continuum. And then there are people who look at the plans and say, yes, we support regeneration programme. Paragraph six on page one four three, that was encouraged, I think Mr Coles touched on that at the beginning, the statement of community involvement. And yes, we have been involved and still not easily involved. But also what is welcome is the Barrett Environmental Survey, because that stresses that the key to success of this parkland is community involvement. And if you go on the portal again, you'll find that three of our local interest groups are fully supportive of the housing, certainly are fully supportive of tree play, but the three local interest groups have responded in that consultation with a desire to be involved with regeneration of the parkland. And that's Darlington Dos, Darlington and Teasdale Natural Steel Flub, with lots of expertise, and the local Friends of the Earth. And so that's encouraging. And we've already had one local scout group have the bat search, they weren't giving it a cricket bat, it was the bat search one evening at dusk with councillor Dom Stowe, who is a scout leader. There is full support, Chair, for the content of an excellent report by the Darlington Ecology Officer. It's an excellent report. It covers all aspects of the ecology, the wildlife, the flora and the fauna, and it's worth looking at and it's worth holding that closely to when the regeneration begins. The work concerns about the pond and the pond restoration. This lies in the middle of the local wildlife site. The whole area is a habitat for the great residents. And there's been an additional ecology report now looking at that work. And people are comfortable with that, but there's a very, very fine timeline between when the work begins and when the pond has to be re-lined.
Turn it to me, is that all right? Can you hear? Okay. In paragraph three of your reports, Pat, it does actually list all the aspects of the regeneration. And then in paragraph sixty one, it gives even further details about the naturalistic parkland. The timeline begins on January the fifteenth, so it's imminent, and it goes till the end of May in twenty four. And it includes the pond construction, footpath construction, there is one hard path for safe school route for children, it's good, and some moan paths, as you've heard, and furniture installation, doggy bins, pond planting, grassland seeding, which is what you've already heard about, and habitat creation. The planned grassland is described as extensive areas of species-rich grassland as a key element of the parkland restoration, which provides an overall ten percent biodiversity net gain, which we must have. There's just been the one big glitch, which you've heard, the herbicide spraying in preparation has caused a lot of concern. Some people have written in about health issues, both personally as well as for their dogs, et cetera. And it's a huge mess.
Can you just say that, Chair, that in the spec, the contractor, whether it carried that work out, had an opportunity to either spray or to plough, and they took the opportunity to spray. And folks are saying now perhaps that should have been done in the springtime, because it really, it really is a mess. And those areas are extensive, but that is to get the biodiversity net gain. And the plants that are going in there are perennials. It's not just the poppy seed mix that you get on the roundabouts. It is going to be eventually, the ecologist advises us, that eventually it is going to be a wonderful site, and it's going to be one of two hundred in the country. Well, you've got these hay meadows that are cut at the end of the season, but she did warn me that it is going to be messy, and I have to say that she's right.
You are up to now with time, Sophie.
Yeah, my last sentence.
Final ones, Chair.
Short ones. The final aim then, and the outcome, is a reversal of bio loss, which is good, and it's occurred since nineteen seventies. And our naturalistic parkland as well for the borough, and an enhanced wildlife habitat, which we'll all agree will be great.
So in that context, if all goes to plan, this should be completed by June twenty twenty four. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your thorough report. Is it your opinion out of interest, because you're clearly very well ginned up on this, is it your opinion that this parkland restoration could happen without the housing scheme? We keep getting told that they come hand in hand, but it occurs to me that it's simply political will, that you could regenerate with specialist interest groups like your own, with other funding means, that this work could be done regardless of the proposed element?
Through you, Chair. When we've looked at the scheme, obviously it's very costly, because the scheme includes the boundary wall, which is a grade two listed wall. It was going to include the ha-ha, which if anyone doesn't know, ha is something fence that you could fall down. Yeah, so that was going to be included. There are railings, there's lots of construction work, but the actual ecology, the actual regeneration of the parkland isn't necessarily dependent on such funding.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr Green. Mr Cassidy.
Thank you, Chairman. I will follow such impressive speeches of previous speakers. Firstly, a special treat for my wife, it's my forty third wedding anniversary today. This is a treat for her, sitting over in the gallery of her boardroom work, I'm going to embarrass her with. But I'd like to speak pretty much from the heart. A long term resident of Darlington, I grew up as a child enjoying those wild open spaces, London's Lane, Eastbourne Park, the quarry, right the way to Mount Mullin Road, catching all sorts of things, although anybody's saying you can't bring that home, you've got to put that back. Wild open spaces, an important asset of life, that gradually we've lost in Darlington. We've lost, a lot of spaces have been filled in in town, so people are having to drive out of town to get open spaces. Recently, I've got to declare an interest and moved onto Grange Side, because for the last since the golf club closed, I exercised my dog in that wonderful parkland. It's absolutely beautiful. I hope all the councils have taken the opportunity in researching this to spend time in there. It's a bit of a mess now, because unannounced, we've had the herbicide spraying, which has destroyed large areas and made it very difficult to walk on, and hopefully that'll rectify itself. But I think that's an important element. So I want to pull in two things. One is heritage, heritage of Darlington. Darlington historically has had very many grand houses. Now, I like you, Mr Hazel, I grew up on a council estate, but I went to a grand house at school, St Marriage, which is home's now. All these grand houses have largely disappeared. The estates have been filled in, apart from Blackwell Ridge, which is now a hotel, but the surrounding grounds of Blackwell Ridge are largely intact. And it is not just a park, we've got some wonderful parks in Darlington, this is not a park. If you spent time in there with a dog like I had, who unfortunately died last year, who needed space away from other dogs, it's absolutely beautiful. You can escape down a little bit behind some trees, it's a beautiful open space. And I think it's a really important thing for health and wellbeing in the community with increasing stress and pressure of life, for people to just spend a bit of time away from it all, working out what they're going to do about this problem to put in their lives, and having time to exercise about that. The other thing about the heritage aspect, I think anyone who's been in Darlington all their lives, that's visited Shildon Railway Works, York Railway Museum, will have wondered why isn't Darlington anything about our very rich railway heritage? Well, we are now, and it's fantastic. The tour with anniversary, we're going to be well up there with everybody else. There's an awful lot of heritage in the Blackwell Ridge estate, that I think it's going to be, we're going to start to lose it, because the area that's talked of, area four oh three, if you look at it on the map, it's quite a sizable chunk. The gradient drops down, it's a completely different experience from walking around that boring part of the Blackwell Ridge, but it's quite a big area that's going to be lost. And the overall thing about the Blackwell Ridge heritage is it's got a lot of history. As far back as, if you've ever been, if you've been into the Blackwell Ridge yourself, there's a painting on the wall of the Tarman Lady. That was left there by Prince William Augustus, the butcher of Caledon. He stopped at Blackwell Ridge as a way to Caledon, and he brought that painting back on his way back home, with I suspect a large proportion of the English army, which would have counted out in that field. There's the medieval ridge and furor system, which, you know, schoolchildren would be very, very interested to find out about. And there's some amazing ancient trees, and quite a few of those trees, you talk about ten percent of the trees are going to be reduced over the size as a whole, but most of those are in area four or three. And there's some magnificent trees that are going to be taken down for the sake of forty four houses, where the net occupancy is going to be one point one per household allegedly. So what I'm saying is, personally, as a long term resident of Darlington, as someone who's local, I would object to the housing development. I may not be able to do that because it's in the housing plan, as you've said, but I would personally object to it and ask the councils, just consider for a moment, the heritage of the town is gradually losing. Because if that chunk goes away, we've already lost the Willows Estate through the side of Carmarole. If that chunk goes away, ten years down the road, when the council is strapped for cash again, which I appreciate the pressures you're under, it's going to be all so easy for this to creep all the way around the rest of the estate, and it will have disappeared. And future generations will have lost that heritage that we currently enjoy. So for that reason, I would object to the housing development. I would support the sensitive development of the parkland. I'm not sure that all that's being proposed is necessary. There are costs associated, but I think community involvement and excellent funding might allow us to produce something. Think about Preston Park in Stockton. Fantastic facility that we can enjoy and our grandchildren can enjoy in the future. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Congratulations on your wedding anniversary and congratulations to your wife.
It's been very long, Sophie, even.
Members, any questions? Okay, thank you very much, sir. I have councillor Scott.
Thank you, Mrs German. I will, in the interest of brevity, I'm not going to repeat some of the comments that have been made by previous speakers, but can I just start by thanking Michael and Angela Green for all the work that they've done and the involvement that they've had since two thousand and nineteen, when we actually started this journey. We had, just background information, we did have a public information meeting, which was held with residents, and as a result of that, the plans were amended. So in principle, I agree with the recommendations, but I have two or three comments to make on it. And to start with, the highways, in paragraph one hundred and seven and paragraph one hundred and eleven, we're talking about highway safety and traffic impact. we're talking about highway safety and traffic impact. Now, the difficulty and the problems that we do have in the area was, they say they have no objections. And in the traffic impact, they're talking about the number of vehicles, the increase of number of vehicles, which are not particularly great. But obviously, you're going to do alterations to the roundabout because they want any better traffic flow. So I think that probably will have an impact. But it's not the number of vehicles, it's actually the speed of the vehicles that are coming up Carmarole South. And we've already got concerns from the development on the other side. And obviously, what we're having discussions with the police, although at this moment in time, the police are not very cooperative. But we're wanting the speed limit off the roundabout to be reduced to thirty miles an hour. It's forty miles an hour for quite a lot of the way. And as you come up to the brow of the hill, where the entrance is into the Willows, and where the entrance will be into this new estate, that is very dangerous. And I think this is something that the residents are already concerned about. So I raise up an issue. I know it's something that we can deal with if this planning application is approved, but it's something that we'll have to take up again with the Highland Authority. Paragraph sixty-six, it has been raised about the trees. Now, if you look at paragraph sixty-six, seventy-four of the trees are actually category C. And as I understand from the information that I've had from other residents, there's not too much concern about that. But only forty-one of them are category A and B. And I would ask that consideration should be given as to whether it's absolutely necessary to remove all of those trees. I think this is the thing that is a concern particularly, and I think that both Michael and Angela have raised this. Yes, we're going to have a four, a hundred and forty-nine new trees planted. But I think we've got to be reassured that they're not going to be just quicks, because it's going to take an awful long time for them to mature. And we're obviously taking out some mature trees. Another issue that was raised in the consultation meeting was actually the parking, particularly in Blackwell Lane and in the areas of Grayside and the Spinning. And I think that's something that we need to look at going forward. And although I appreciate it's not part of this planning application. We've already got problems in Blackwell Lane when the, when the football, sorry, have meetings and so forth. So that's another issue. And that was one thing that was raised, particularly from the residents in Blackwell Lane. And I think that's something that needs to be looked at going forward. What I would like, and I think it's something that Michael raised, is the ambiguity of the comment. And I would like an assurance from the legal department that obviously the ambiguity of the statement that was made, and I think that Mr. Cox did introduce it at the beginning, but there is still concerns that somebody can challenge that. That the fact that the site is shown as the whole of the site and not just four or three. And we need to be reassured that the parkland will be retained in the ownership of the local authority to avoid any challenge from a developer who can come in and challenge that statement. Now, it was suggested that an amendment could be made, and I would like a view on that, because I would have thought that might be well to raise this. We know what's happened before with developers coming in, challenging legal statements. And I think we must be reassured that the heritage parkland will be retained in the future of the people of Darlington. And know that the previous speaker has said that they're really against any housing development. And I know a question was asked by one of the councillors about whether funding could be required to look after the parkland. We did actually go down that route to see whether there was any funding, any, you know, people who would be prepared to sort it. And I think it's unrealistic because of the, the cost of retaining, of, of looking after the parkland, but particularly the wall in Blackwell Lane, which obviously needs an awful lot of money spending on it. It, it is listed and it needs refurbishing. And I think the only way that the local authority will be able to do any of that is getting the funding from the housing. I think that in, as I say, in principle, I agree with the application. But I think certainly I would like reassurance from the legal officer that there is no possibility of the ambiguity of the statement being taken on board. And we have had comments from somebody else who is in the legal profession, who said they're concerned about that as well. I think we really do need that reassurance. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think everything else has been said by the other people who have spoken.
Thank you, councillor Scott. No questions for you. We now move on to Mr. Cox to respond to the issues of the previous speakers.
Thanks very much, Chair. Perhaps I can start off with, there are some interlinked issues here, I think. Bearing in mind what councillor Scott has said and Mr. Mrs. Green as well. So perhaps some of these areas will overlap, but I'll try and break them down as, as best I can. In the first instance, the, the whole confusion between what effectively is the development site, four or three, and the line shown on the plan which is attached to your agendas today. Just to reaffirm what I said at the beginning of the meeting, that plan does not form part of the application. It's purely for identification purposes. And if, if that's caused some confusion, apologies. However, there was a reasoning behind that, because it did incorporate the whole site, because the parkland does form part of this, this development. So it would be bizarre to exclude it. But I do accept that could have been made more specific in that plan. But please accept my assurances, I've already written to Mr. Mrs. Green to, to make that absolutely clear, that the, the rest of the parkland site does not form part of any housing development. And the, yeah, it, it's, it's, it's out with the, of the housing application anyway. So there are two distinct areas. As we move forward, the site will not be conveyed to the, the developers. It will be retained by DBC, and it will be then maintained by DBC for, for sale in the future perpetuity.
I'm going to point to all this, Chair, I'm sorry, I appreciate what, what this is about. Do you have to be a legal officer as well, just to reassure?
I'm just, I'm just asking that, because it's a question of Covid. It's okay, councillor. Yeah, if you look at condition two of the conditions, that refers to the plans that are attached.
Could you speak to, it doesn't, everybody is in the same area.
Yeah, sorry. If you look at condition two of the conditions that said proposing, that includes a list of the, the plans that are attached to the proposed provision. And in those plans, that sets out, which is to be the parkland and which is to be the, the housing estate. So the, the condition is dealing with separation of the parkland and estate.
Right, and that response was only a, a new one, indeed.
Well, I was, I was sorry. The final point, all right? Mr. Cox.
That, that's, that's all I wanted to say on, on Mr. Green's original question, Chair. I think I've answered now. The other review is Ken Madison, Mr. Madison, and the issues he's raised. And he, he did quite rightly say, the last full council, I think, there was a motion to look into the, the whole issue in terms of sewage. And I think, I believe the senior politician indicated that that conversation would take place. And it would be, and representatives of any of you, I'm sorry, understand. And there would be hopefully brought to a, a kind of scrutiny committee, not this one, but, but a scrutiny committee. I don't know whether that's occurred or not, I don't believe it has. So nevertheless, that, that is a situation which is ongoing, I guess.
Well, you know, for your property, so, so you've got a chance to come back to the general person.
Sorry. The, so that, I understand is a, is a process that is, is taking place at some point. But I think the key issue is we have the regulatory body, Darlington Borough Council, and the regulatory body here. And that is others, that's the Environment Agency, and of course, Northumbria Water. Now, I know there was concerns from a, a number of residents who would say, well, you know, they would say that, wouldn't they? So I, I actually take a council opinion on this. In, in how, at what point do we discharge our responsibilities as DBC? Now, we obviously, as part of that process, we consult the statutory bodies, and they come back and say, no objections or no objections to these conditions, which they have in this particular case. On council advice, I've actually gone back to the statutory undertakers and Environment Agency to say, thank you for your comments.
Sorry, Chair, I do have concern, obviously, separate discussions are taking place. And with, so not just councillor Tuskman, but councillor Robinson as well received something from a member in the public gallery. I'm just concerned the procedures not being adhered to by members on this committee at the moment. Sorry, introduction, Mr. Cox.
Okay, I was, I was, I didn't know if I had else to do. The last one, yours is very important. I'm, I'm assuming members should be behaving themselves. Don't believe, again, I want to while going on, but, sorry, sorry, upstairs. I, thank you for bringing that up, I'm starting again, thank you for bringing that to my attention. And we'll be watching it. I am pretty certain members will be behaving themselves, and I hope they will for the rest of this making. As Big Brother would say, we will be watching. Yes, councillor.
Somebody has just passed me a note, if that's what you're referring to. But I haven't read the note, and I just said what do you want me to do with it, and they went, so it's been, no, nothing at all.
I, I have, I don't particularly have a problem with colleagues swapping information. It's not our practice to take advice of members or speak to us. And I think if it's, for, for some of the members of the public to bring it past, and then that maybe will assist, I hope, councillor.
Chair, there should be an exchange, an open exchange of information. For additional information to be shared, it should be presented in the proper format and in the, the procedure of the meeting. I don't feel that any additional sharing should be taking place. Just my opinion, Chair, I was.
Well, I, I agree here up to a point, but knowing how colleagues like, because, because the amount of speaking that we're allowed here, it's not unusual for colleagues to pass notes to each other to remind them on. That has been going on, but I don't believe anything untoward has been done. I do take it one, councillor, which is very valid. Come in, move on.
Mr. Cox. As, as I was just saying, the whole process of sewage disposal, we are not a regulatory body. And I've taken council opinion, at what point do we, do we, as DBC, discharge our responsibilities in that respect? I'm not suggesting for a moment that we ignore it, we don't. And council opinion has suggested that the process we go through by consulting statutory bodies, including the Environment Agency, does technically discharge our responsibilities and acting on their, their responses. In addition to that, however, what we do is, having received the comments back from those bodies, we ask the question again, have you taken into account the local infrastructure? And the point of discharging to a, in the sewage treatment works? The clear answers that have come back from those bodies is yes, they have. In the absence of understanding what Mr. Madison has been saying, in the absence of that, we have more than discharged our responsibilities of local planning authority to ask those questions and reaffirm those questions. Because we have no base evidence suggested there was. So it is reasonable, in those circumstances, having gone through that process, to accept what a consultee actually says. The, the other, the other issue was the, I think Mr. Madison raised, if I remember rightly, the, the process about the local plan. Now, when the local plan was being assessed, of course, Northumbria Water and the Environment Agency were a consultee in that process. So they knew this was coming over the hill. And so there's a, a two-level approach, one, one of which is consultation process for allocation of the local plan. That was done, and there were no objections received from either. And the second process, when a detailed application comes in, you do that sense check again, the consultation on individual application. And then when you look again, to ask the specific question about is the infrastructure correct? And where is the, the food joint, does it have capacity? And in both of those occasions, they've come back with affirmative. So as a local authority, I, I can't do any more than ask the right questions and often accept truthless. Mr. Taylor raised this with regarding the spraying of the parkland, I believe. I, I'm inclined to agree with you, Mr. Taylor. I don't think it was the brightest thing to do at that moment in time. But nevertheless, it occurred. But nevertheless, it was insatisfactory. And I do understand it has caused some localized problems. Again, confirming, linking into Mr. Green's point, that area does not fall back with housing development. And it is set aside for a parkland improvement, and it will be maintained perpetually by the council. That is, that is very clear. And I think it's also important to, to acknowledge what it currently is, the land. It, it is a piece of land which happens to be open space, important open space, but nevertheless is owned by the council. And there is no statutory right to pass and bypass across it, which is very regrettable. Whereas a result of this development, that will change. It will be formalized into a, the public domain, an improved public domain. And please rest assured.